Good evening and welcome to the Town Board meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we have a storm and the lights flicker, stay seated because if the power goes out, we do have a generator, so you're better off here than anywhere else. It's a very odd night. Thank you all for coming. This is the first meeting of the month of August and the only meeting, official meeting, that we're having, so we're doing not only items of business, but also a few board and department reports, but we'd like to move it right along if we can. So I'll open with the town monthly statement of the supervisor. To the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook pursuant to section 119 of the town law, I hereby tender the following detailed statement of all monies received and dispersed by the supervisor during the month, and that's the month of June, ending June 30th. The opening balance was $4,675,241. We received $1,188,691. We dispersed $1,749,958, leaving a remaining balance of $4,113,974. There are no transfers or budget adjustments. The above is a true and correct accounting of the balances shown on the books of the Town of Red Hook at the close of business June 30th, 2015. Is there a motion to accept?
No.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And I believe the clerk has a report. Yes, I do.
Town Clerk Monthly Report, July 1st through July 31st, 2015. Total local shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue, $1,617.71. Amount remitted to New York State for ag and markets for the spade and neuter program, $78. Amount remitted to New York Department of Health for marriage licenses, $157.50. Amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $264.54. For a total state, county, and local revenue of $2,117.75. Pursuant to section 27, sub-1 of the town law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk of the Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office. I also have a abstract tonight, a July 2015, vouchers 19195 through 19280. The total abstract is $82,356.2. Out of the General A Fund, $32,970.5. General B Fund, $11,332.86. The Highway DB, $14,941.74. The Capital Highway Garage New, $5,200. SF Fire, $11,217.26. SL Lighting, $1,954.23. Water O and M, $4,739.88. For the total abstract of $82,356.2. And I hereby certify that the vouchers numbered 19195 through 19280, processed in the month of July, are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the Town Board. Sue McCann, Town Clerk. I really just have one announcement. The sporting licenses went on sale yesterday, however, the system is already down. We've had a lot of trouble. It's a new system within New York State, and it's down already, so I'm asking hunters to have some patience. We've had quite a few people come in today, and hopefully they'll have it up and running very shortly. That's it.
Good. Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
Okay, so are there any announcements, starting with you, Bill?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, and Jim Crane?
No.
Jim Ross. You're Ross. I know who you are. Brenda?
Just a little notice about the Red Hook Trails Plan that is underway. We're in the public outreach part of that, so there is a website where everybody can begin to submit their comments. If you go to redhooktrailplan weebly, that's W-E-E-B-L-Y dot com, there's a survey and a place to give your comments. And as time goes on in the public comment process, we'll have maps where you can draw on your trail wish list, and we hope that they'll be in the libraries, all the government buildings, and at selected events, so stay tuned.
Thank you, Brenda. And I have just a couple have already gotten an announcement about the Hardscrabble Parade on September 19th, and it's, the committee is up and running, and I see Sue McCann, you're on the...
Parade Committee.
Parade Committee, which, thank you for doing that. That's great. There will be, the parade's starting at 4:00 PM at Linden Avenue Middle School with lineup at 3:00 PM. The events go on throughout the day, starting around 10:00 in the morning, if I remember right.
Yes, right.
And it's a wonderful day with a lot of activities, and I know that it's going to be better this year than ever. I've had it from direct authority, so...
We have wonderful music every year, and Jackie Green is going to be the music...
And more good stuff. As good stuff comes, more good stuff keeps coming. I wanted to remind everyone that the pop-up art event that's responded to our call for interest in use of St. Margaret's, Red Hook Can, the Red Hook Community Arts Network, have moved ahead sponsoring their fall, it's called Dog Days, D-O-G-D-A-Y-Z, and you'll see this little postcard around. It's being left for people to pick up, to remind them that there's an opening reception on August 21st, 5 to 7. Board, I hope you will try to be there because they have worked very, very hard. I stepped in on Saturday and they were already hanging art, and it's really transforming the inside of that building. It's going to be very much fun. There will be art exhibits, music, dance, stories, puppet show, and during the event in the day, the following day, there's going to be music, and I believe that there's even going to be food served. You can bring a blanket and a chair, hang out if you want. It's celebrating the arts in this historic building, so good for them. They've been creative. They have enabled us to draw attention to this wonderful building, and we've enjoyed the support of the Old Dutch Garden Club, who have agreed to provide flowers for the porch, so it's catching on in the community. I think people are excited, so I hope everybody tries to attend us up here for sure, that opening from 5 to 7 on the Friday night. And then it's, these events run Saturday and Sunday, August 22 and 23, 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM during the day. I have shared with you, and I believe you have it in your folder, I received from my friend Harry Baldwin, who is the President of the Duchess County Agriculture and Farmland Protection Board, their plan for the executive summary of 2015. It's a beautiful piece, and I hope you'll take time to look at it, to show some of the initiatives that have been taking place in farming in Duchess County. And that's all I'm going to say about that. You have it to read, and I hope you do. So the last thing I wanted to remind everyone here and remind the public that we have a special workshop planned on Wednesday, September 23rd. It's ordinarily our meeting night anyway, so we would be coming together, but it is going to be devoted to a couple of issues, one in particular that will require our planner here to discuss the local law amending Chapter 143, Historic Structures and Districts. And I hope planning board members will come and hear what it's about...
September 23rd, right?
September 23rd. So we're going to begin the conversation on that night, and I'm sure it will be a project, so not to think that it would be resolved that night, but that's the beginning of the discussion. Okay, so that's all I have, and there is public comment I know tonight, so I will ask you, Robert George, if you would like to lead off, because you were kind enough to come and speak to two of us yesterday about a proposal you have been mulling around. So the floor is yours.
The floor is mine. Should I stand up?
It would be good if you do, and if it's comfortable for you.
Should I speak into the microphone?
Yes, that would be great.
With my back to you or facing you?
Facing us would be good.
Robert George, and there's two Rs in Robert. So I have a proposed project that I would like the Town Board to entertain, which is to utilize the space at St. Margaret's for an ice skating rink. And the ice skating rink can be multipurpose and used for rollerblading and roller skating in the spring, summer, and fall. We're going to, for everybody in the community, set up a Facebook page to go and look at everything, all the drawings. I emailed you everything that I have in my hand, rendering concepts. The project would be privately funded and designed and constructed by my office, all services donated by my office. And we were invited to participate at the Dog Days of Summer event that Red Hook Can has put on. Thank you, Red Hook Can, for that. And so there'll be renderings posted there and some information about the proposed project, and again, on the Facebook page, which will be probably called Red Hook on Ice, or, yeah, probably Red Hook on Ice, excuse me. Do you have any questions?
Well, this is the first, some of us have seen the renderings tonight, unless they have picked them up on their website, so let's...
St. Marg, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go.
Well, St. Margaret's is down in the lower left corner of this, the building itself, right? And you would propose the rink to be between the building and the, what, the capes?
Yeah, it would be parallel to the Holy Cow Building. So there's a flat space there.
Yeah, and you have enough land there?
There's enough land there, yeah.
Under the septic and all that?
Yeah, there's enough land there, and I emailed drawings to Harold and Sue and Brenda tonight, which show plan views and perspective views and polished renderings. And they will show that between Route 9 and the ice skating rink, there's a structure that's multipurpose that could be used for bleachers, outdoor movies, year-round performances. That structure would block road noise.
Robert, it's on the board there. If you'd like to walk over there and point to what you're discussing, maybe that would...
There would be this image here on the bottom. And so this structure would be parallel to Route 9. This would be a great success for everyone in terms of the types of winters we've had recently. If we end up with really warm winters, well, it'll be different. But the surface will be prepared for roller skating, rollerblading in the spring, summer, and fall. This structure illustrated here shows a possibility for snow and ice sculpture going on, where our local art students could engage in showing off their talents and abilities. This is an aerial view. Again, all of this will be posted on Facebook. This is a rough logo concept inspired by my daughter, Lily George. So there's a hook in here, of course. So all of this will be on Facebook for everybody to look at and make your drag and drop and download these images and print them at home if they'd like.
Robert, the question that was asked that was skipped over because I'm not sure, I know for sure, and I'm reasonably certain you don't know for sure, where the septic system is for St. Margaret's, but I think it's in that general direction. So that is something that we would have to determine and investigate and figure out what to do about, so just...
I can answer that.
Just, if you can answer it to the exact location?
Yeah, it's actually, the D-box is above the ground, and the laterals go to the east from there, and the D-box is just to the rear of the left side of the building. So it's really quite close to the building.
It's not there.
It is not in that area.
Yeah, I walked the property with John Kuhn about, I think, four years ago. He pointed that out to me.
Yeah.
Good.
So those are just some basic brushstrokes of the concept of the proposed project. More information will be available at the pop-up Dog Days of Summer event put on by Red Hook Can, and on the Facebook page, Red Hook on Ice. And so you can all go there and read more about it and share it with everybody in the community.
So, Robert, where does it fit with the Rec Commission? You know, John Kuhn's, people, people who have studied promoting athletic programs, you know, in the Town of Red Hook. Do they like the idea? Do they support it? Can you say?
I've spoken with John Kuhn on the telephone, and he was very excited about the project. I don't have other specifics to go into.
Has anybody ever tried this before in the Town of Red Hook, do we know? In ice, rain, storms?
I think peppered throughout New England, or, you know, 100 years ago, there used to be ice skating everywhere. As far as I know, in my recent decades, there hasn't been. And our closest ice skating facilities and sororities. So as part of our pedestrian experience in Red Hook, to bring people together and have a different point of view about winter, I thought it would be a nice project for all of us. It wouldn't cost the town a penny, and I thought that was good.
We think that's good.
So do we.
It wouldn't cost the taxpayers a penny.
Better yet.
And people who live in the village could walk to it, especially after the new sidewalk is built, and I think it would stimulate local business and bring more people to the community.
You probably would get pressure from the real sports fans who wanted them to go into hockey, ice hockey, and rollerblade hockey, stuff like that.
It would be great to have the kind of pressure where it's used and loved and enjoyed by everybody, so I welcome that pressure. But the goal would be...
Would it be as large as a hockey rink or no?
It would be ideally as large as a, you know, a hockey rink, which I think is 100 by 200 feet. If we run into issues regarding the property owned by Hannaford, regarding setbacks, I will do my due diligence in terms of working with the legal department of Hannaford to get whatever permission we would need to encroach on their property or setback.
And would they share the Holy Cow parking lot?
The use of this, the people parking, would ideally, yeah, and I don't have permission for that yet, but I would seek permission for use of the parking lot, but the east space that rarely is used, and it's quite a big space.
Yes, I have a, I have a contact, the landlord of Hardscrabble Plaza. I was going through materials today, and we have a letter that's old, it's numbers of years old, from him indicating that his first priority while he was supportive of the use of St. Margaret's for an arts program for the summer, that particular summer, it might have been as long ago as 2007. Nevertheless, his priorities were his tenants and making sure that the parking was appropriate for his tenants, and that any parking that took place at St. Margaret's would be directed to the rear of the Hardscrabble Plaza parking lot. So I called him and left a message today to ask him to dig out that letter. I have it if he doesn't, and to refresh it so that we have some sense of what is his position today. It may have changed in that amount of time, so I just thought I'd tell you that I've made that contact. I haven't heard back.
Well, in the aerial views you'll see online on the Facebook page, this one implies here, but there's a pedestrian entry point from the east side of the Holy Cow Hardscrabble Plaza, where there's all that unused parking space. So ideally, people coming to use the facility would be directed with signage to park in the back entry point would be here. I'm showing another entry barge point here on the west side, only because of convenience, I'm thinking of summertime, there's always hundreds of people going to Holy Cow for ice cream, and it would be nice to get, you know, 50% of those people that come roller skating after their ice cream. So to have this lit and inviting, I thought would be apropos to bring them in and draw them in. You know, you'll see, there's mirror balls, and there's LED kind of wedding lights, safe, you know, pedestrian lighting throughout, and this multipurpose stage space, which could be used, you know, all year round for performances or films. I also could make a casual side note, footnote announcement, that the next Red Hook Film Festival is going to take place in concert with Hardscrabble Day, and that's another community project that my company has started. So that we'll be utilizing two venues in the community for the next film festival, the Firehouse and the stage that'll be set up in the Village. So we'll be joining forces with Apple Blossom Day, so...
Is that, that's in the spring or Hardscrabble Day? Which, which do you mean?
I'm sorry, Apple Blossom Day, which would be in the spring.
Is the spring, yes.
Before Mother's Day.
Yes, yes, that's right.
And all of this will be formally announced, specifically, this will be announced as a proposed project at the Dog Days of Summer event put on by Red Hook Can on the 21st and 22nd.
That'll tie in nicely with the new sidewalk.
Yes.
And I especially like what you said about the buffer between the area and the highway because we had one of the Legion concerts at that site last summer, and it was really, it was a wonderful sight and very beautiful, but it's also very noisy, so...
Yeah, the cars can sound like the ocean if you put on a good imagination, but yeah, I think that would be tough. That was the reason why I chose to put the building here and make it the width of the skating rink. So that, and it also has wings, so it's for acoustic reasons as well as line of sight to block out the road.
Now, one of the things you had said to us yesterday is that the construction of the rink, in my mind, is fairly elaborate, and ultimately will have a waterproof surface on it, so the water is not going to migrate into the ground and disappear, et cetera, et cetera. It's going to remain there to freeze, and that at the same time creates a skateable service, surface for the summer.
Well, it won't be skateable in the summer.
No, I meant roller skate.
It'll have a different surface for the summer.
Okay.
That'll be installed seasonally and taken apart seasonally.
In the winter, though, it'll be a waterproof surface to hold the ice.
Yeah, it'll be a rubber membrane put down, and it'll be flooded. And I, I'm sorry, I can't think of the man's last name, a local person, his first name is Todd, who delivers swimming pool water. Most of us with swimming pools, he's offered to donate the first two loads of water for the ice skating rink.
Todd Denew.
Todd Denew, and I thought that was very thoughtful of him, because it's going to take about five to six loads of water to a facility, so...
Now, I don't know about everybody else up here and out there who used to roller skate and ice skate, but I know I had a lot of skin knees and a couple of broken limbs, which makes me think about insurance, and in, as much as it is on town property, we would have those things to hammer out with your group if we were to engage in this kind of a, an enterprise or a partnership, because, you know, there would be liability issues.
Sure. Have you been skiing recently?
No, not recently. I have been, but I have to confess, Robert, it hasn't been the last five years.
Typically, when you go skiing, they have, you know...
Ski at your own risk?
Yeah.
Yeah, well...
There would be significant insurance provided, and whether or not it was a partnership or my group somehow took over the property so there was no liability for the town, we would be open for collaboration and discussion of any...
Okay.
Anything that was...
Something that will have to be addressed.
Something that, anything that's a win-win for the community, we're open to.
Okay, just thought I'd mention that. It's a concern.
Yeah.
Jim, how about you? You are a liaison to St. Margaret, and there's been a little activity here.
My concern is that, you know, the size and the space, do we even, you know, for 100 by 200 and then the buildings, I'm not even just concerned about encroachment, I'd have to see exactly where our property landed, the back, have you guys pasted out to see where we...
I've pasted out. I haven't done a specific site plan. That will be, you know, the next step.
Because I know there's trees planted in the back that were, you know, even, you know...
Yes.
Yeah, so we want to make sure that we've got room enough for 100 by 200, you know, particularly with a buffer, building and buffer between the highway, which I'm not sure how deep our lot is there. I don't have a map in front of me.
I think it'll be...
Do you know how deep we are right there?
No, well, actually, the rear boundary is angled. It gets closer to the road as you get to the Hardscrabble Building.
Right.
And the dimension, it doesn't go entirely to the rear. It's about two-thirds back on the Hardscrabble Building is about all I know, but I think we do have a plot plan that shows, shows exactly where it is, but it's, you know...
Is it approximately where this, that green line is on this little sketch, possibly?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, yeah, this is, this is a concept, yeah, layout.
No, 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 it's over here.
But the line is somewhere in here through this building.
It has to be figured out exactly.
On an angle. But as I mentioned when we met yesterday, I'm willing to do the work, the due diligence work in terms of working with Hannaford to get right of way, usage of a bit more square footage, and I'm willing to do whatever work is required to create a win-win situation for the community and space of St. Margaret's. I've lived here for eight and a half years. I graduated far in college a little more than 30 years ago, and raising a family here would be a really nice component to our community to be able to look at winter from a different point of view instead of, oh, another four-month winter. Instead, oh my God, we can go ice skating. You know, there's going to be so-and-so band playing live, and there'll be lots of wonderful people, great lighting, and I can't wait to see everybody. And what are the kids going to be sculpting this weekend out of snow? I don't even want to know. But the point is, it would, I think, change how we all think about winter, and it's a component of community building, which to me, it's a parallel, or it's the same thing as the film festival. The film festival, to me, is about storytelling and having all of us exposed to unique stories we normally wouldn't. we normally wouldn't hear. And so this is just three-dimensional, you know, parallel of that where we all are together sharing in a story. And it could forever change our communities, you know, in terms of what we think and how we think about winter.
Well, Robert, you have brought forward, along with Red Hook Community Arts Network, some ideas that we've been asking the public for, and we thank you for that. And what I would like to do with your agreement is to get in touch with the people who have been asking me, who are former members of Saint Margaret's Committee. It's, it's a committee that has lost a number of members in this past year, but, but in honor of that effort that they have put into the building, I'd like to have them hear what it is you're proposing. Let you speak with them directly so that they're included in this effort, and I think you'll find some friends there who would wrap their arms around this and be a great help to you. So I wouldn't want to proceed without your having talked with them. I haven't talked with you about it, Jim, but I believe that's the right thing to do.
Yeah, that would, that would make sense. I mean, you know, if we can work out the problems with space and property lines and everything else, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Thank you. It'd be, it'd be a great honor and a great privilege.
Okay, so that's, that's what I would do next, is to just, you know, vet the idea with them so that they're included in, in the discussion. And then we have some work to do regarding boundaries and legal and, you know, it's, it's going to be, as government always is, not easy, but not impossible, so.
Well, whatever I can do to take the burden off of the town.
Thank you.
I do have two assistants that like to stay busy with this.
Good, thank you.
So I plan on keeping them busy with this, so there's no burden to the community financially.
Great.
It's my gift.
Thank you, thank you, Robert.
Thank you for your many gifts.
Thank you for your time.
So that's exciting, and you're very welcome. Is there any other?
Do you have more, more packages of the cartoons?
Yes, I will leave you with these.
Okay, I have.
And I emailed these to Brenda and Sue and yourself this evening.
Yeah, I can't print them.
Shall we, shall we forward wide, wide play is one of my.
Please, please forward.
These, there's a few packages here.
Give me a day before you do that to contact the members tomorrow.
I have a meeting with the Ad hoc Development Committee in the morning, so I wanted to show it to them.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Robert. It's great to have you. Thank you very much. Okay, is there any further public comment before we move on into the actual agenda? Hearing none, the first item on the agenda is to consider the resolution approving the amendment of the town's purchasing and procurement policy, and you'll find that under tab one. We've talked with Ted about this, and it largely, here.
Thank you.
It largely is concerned with the public works portion of our procurement policy. And the procurement policy guidelines for public bidding say, at the moment, say that public works up to $5,000 at the discretion of the originating department and approval of the purchasing agent. We are suggesting that we raise that to $10,000 so that contracts for public works be up to $10,000 for discretionary spending with the approval of the purchasing agent or the head of the department. And in regard to the next step, which had been $5,000, which was anything over $10,000, it has been $5,000, anything over $10,000 now to $34,999, it would be adequate to get written fax or email quotes. At least three vendors will be solicited, and then over the $35 would remain a formal public bid. So it's just a matter of raising for the bidding process $5,000 to $10,000, and $5,000, and from over $10,000 to almost $35,000, at least three vendors will be solicited. So that's approving the amendment of the town red hook purchasing procurement policy. I believe you have this resolution in your packet.
I do.
Do you have any questions? Because I, I hate reading this. It's not easy to read the entire thing, but it's a policy that we have been very, very strict about, and Ted is, is a good policeman when it comes to it. And we have run amok with this low public works bid of $5,000 because it's so easy for a bid to go over $5,000 these days. So $10,000 would be discretionary, the maximum of $10,000 would be discretionary, and then over $10,000 would be a written fax or email of at least three vendors. Does everyone follow that?
Yes.
And would someone, Jim, would you read the amendment for me, the resolution, please?
It's just the two pages.
Yeah, it's just two paragraphs, yeah.
Approving Amendment of the Town of Red Hook Purchasing and Procurement Policy. Whereas a proposed amendment to Town of Red Hook Purchasing and Procurement Policy, also known as the procurement policy, has been recommended to the Town Board of the Town Red Hook by the purchasing agent to modify the threshold for approval of public works contracts so that, one, contracts up to $10,000 are to be at the discretion of the originating department with the approval of the purchasing agent; and, two, contracts over $10,000 and up to $34,999 require written fax, written fax or email quotes with at least three vendors solicited if available, and three contracts over $35,000 remain subject to formal public bid procedures. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Board of the Town Red Hook by favorable vote of not less than the majority of all members of the board, that in accordance with section 104-B of the General Municipal Law, foregoing the amendment to the procurement policy for the Town Red Hook is hereby approved. A copy of the amendment procurement policy shall be filed in the office of Town Clerk and shall be posted on the town website. I would like a second, I guess, for that, Sue?
Thank you, Bill.
You know, for discussion, we talked about this a number of years ago.
Yes, we did.
And the reason we kept the five is because that was Ted's recommendation at the time.
Yes, yes.
And now, obviously, things are more expensive.
Getting much more problematic.
Yes.
It is. It's, it's just a matter of unwieldy, and, you know, sometimes for an extra few hundred dollars, you have to go through all this paperwork and aggravation, and so I think it's more reality-based than.
Oh, yeah, the lower figure accomplishes nothing but more aggravation.
It really doesn't, that's right. Is there any further discussion or comment?
None.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, item number two is.
Ms. Supervisor, if you want to discuss the best value proposal by Ted as well, that's in the packet.
Did I want to discuss something?
The best value proposal, it's in the packet. I didn't know if that's something Ted wanted to do.
Best value.
It's a resolution.
Where in the form of a local law?
Oh, yeah.
This, it's this page, it was this.
The law, this, in that section.
This?
Yes. I didn't put it in there, but I assume that Ted did.
Well, I have it. We have it.
Yeah, we have it.
Yeah, while we're on it, that's, that's probably exactly what he's suggesting, and I did skip right on by that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think what he is proposing is, or at least proposing for you to discuss, is to be aware that there is a new provision of the General Municipal Law on bidding that allows you to provide for additional flexibility in awarding contracts which are purchase and service contracts, not the public works contracts that you were just talking about. So the purchase and service contracts, which are subject to a $20,000 requirement for formal bidding procedures, this would allow those contracts to be awarded, taking into account best value standards, and you can take a look at that language. If you haven't looked at this yet, perhaps it would be a good idea to take a look at that, have some further discussion, and then consider it for the following meeting at your discretion.
This is, this does not include a resolution here?
No, but we could certainly, this next step would be to set a public hearing, so.
Okay. So we just set a public hearing for the next meeting?
We could, if you were prepared to do that, you could certainly do that.
Well, it's time to do that, the meeting.
Yeah, I think, I would be content to set a public hearing for the next meeting, which is an entire month away. Would you all agree? It's, it's not that complex a concept, but if we need to have a public hearing because we are amending local law, we have to do it.
Right.
Yeah.
You want to hear what you do, too.
Yeah, and he sent it in this week, so.
Right, what I would like to do is suggest that if you are going to, you know, set that hearing, I would have you label this Local Law D of 2015 to keep it straight from other things that are being proposed and proposed, because this was a draft that was prepared a while ago when the law was changed, and Ted was consulting with others and reviewing it and so forth, I think, in the meantime. So he brought it forward again, I think, more recently, and thought that perhaps it's something you ought to consider.
Okay. Okay, so, so if I may suggest to you that we schedule a public hearing, and if Ted feels it important, he can certainly be here for the meeting of the eighth, and we'll do it the first thing off the bat so that we can take care of it right away.
September eighth.
So September eighth at, let's say, 7:45. Okay?
Sure.
So I think if you could do a formal motion referencing Local Law Number Ds proposed of 2015 and file with the clerk and reference this specific hearing date in your motion, I think that would be adequate.
The motion is set for the year.
Okay, so I move to set the public hearing for September eighth at 7:45 to consider Local Law D of 2015 establishing Chapter 31 of the Code of the Town of Red Hook to permit the town to award purchase contracts on the basis of best value. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for catching that, I appreciate it. Okay, okay, so. In section two, you will find another resolution, and you will recall that we discussed at length, or maybe not, not at length, but there was a fair amount of background information from our town highway superintendent about crosswalks at the old Rhinebeck aerodrome. And we found that if we were to provide legal crosswalks, which we are willing to do, stop me if I'm wrong, we are willing to do, we then have to create a local law enabling us to do so. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so has anyone any comments about establishing crosswalks at Norton Road for pedestrians from the parking space to the old Rhinebeck aerodrome? Does anyone have any objection to us pursuing that?
I don't.
No, I have no objection.
Okay, so hearing none, then we should, it could and should take the next step, I think, which is to look at the resolution that's been provided.
And Madam Supervisor, I have a little bit of additional information from Teresa to fill in, which is one blank that's on the attachment two to the form of local law that you should have. If you turn to that page, let's see that there's a blank for the location of the crosswalk. It's on Norton Road, and it's approximately 400 feet farther away from the intersection with Stone Church. So there's a blank there for 400, is what I'm saying.
The last page.
Very last page.
Oh, excellent, okay, gotcha.
So we could pass a local law and then include it, the one crosswalk that we're going to have at the same time?
Now, yeah. I mean, the local law, right, this is, it's similar to the way we structured the stop sign thing, so you can then amend it, add it if you need to.
We can just add, should we decide?
To make it easy to amend it.
That makes, that makes good sense, yeah.
Is this crosswalk the same place where it was before?
Yeah.
The only question is, why is it attachment two?
Because attachment one to 131 is the stop sign.
Oh, sorry, of course, of course, okay.
So we're just adding this into the vehicle and traffic provisions.
Gotcha, okay.
So it fits right into that same section. It's just an amendment to that section. So stop signs and then crosswalks and penalties and so forth.
So duly noted.
This is our first crosswalk.
This is the first one that we have in law, because I think that, Teresa, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, there's regulatory authority to do crosswalks at intersections. This is a mid-block crosswalk, and I think that her advice from Cornell Rhodes was that that, you know, that is the reason that there's a need for, there's authority in the vehicle and traffic law for the town to establish those, but there isn't sort of automatic authority for Teresa to go out and do it.
So the comment from the state was that our concern is for the drivers on the road and that we should warn them of things that may not be obvious. So if you're coming down Norton Road, it's not obvious that there's a crosswalk there, but there will be people crossing all the time when the aerodrome is open. So by putting the crosswalk and the crosswalk warning signs, you're protecting the people who are crossing the road. And since there was one there for many years, it's an established institution in Red Hook, you know, that, that all those point to being able to put a crosswalk there, but it's our responsibility and not theirs.
And Teresa would need to put up a muck of compliance signage around the crosswalk, obviously, at the same time as she puts in the crosswalk.
Right, so we have the authority to do it, but present in our local law, we'd never establish a law to do so, so this would do that.
Right.
Okay, very good. So the resolution dated August 11th, 2015, establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption of a town board of the Town of Red Hook, a local law C proposed of 2015 regarding crosswalks. And I think we've all understand it, and, well, I guess I may as well read it. Whereas a proposed form of local law entitled Proposed Local Law C of 2015, a local law amending Chapter 131 of Code of Town of Red Hook entitled Vehicles and Traffic, adding establishment of certain crosswalks, the proposed local law, has been submitted to the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook. And whereas the proposed local law would modify certain provisions of the code to provide for establishment of certain crosswalks, including a mid-block crosswalk at Norton Road. And whereas pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the Town Board has determined that the proposed local law is best described as a local legislative decision concerning routine administration and management under Saker, and that adoption of the local law constitutes a type-two action which will not have a significant effect on the environment. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook as follows. The Town Board shall hold a public hearing on September 8th, 2015, at 8:00 p.m. at Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, to hear all interested parties on said proposed law, and the Town Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish notice of said public hearing. And that would need to be in official newspapers, the Poughkeepsie Journal and Kingston-Framant on or before September 3rd, which is not less than five days prior to the date of the public hearing, and I so move.
Second?
Thank you.
You don't want to make it 7:50 rather than 8:00?
Well, we said 7:45. Do you think we can dispo- Do you think we can dispatch the other one in five minutes?
Probably.
I'd say so. I would think, you know, then we don't have to, you know, sit there and interrupt, but my only thought...
7:50 is fine with me. That sounds fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And Chris, would this pertain to propose crosswalks on the, on 9 with the sidewalk?
No, because you don't have authority, as I understand it, over state highways, right? So, just town roads, right, and town outside of the village. It's statutory.
Now, with establishing this, Chris, should we need a crosswalk or cross another town road in the future? Do we have to pass another law, or just do an attachment without a public hearing?
We have to do a local law, because I don't think that there is, according to statutory provisions, it has to be an ordinance or local law, I think, not just a resolution, in other words, because it's regulatory nature. Regulatory nature, and you need to be able to take it for a violation, you know?
So, you have to have a public hearing every time?
That's right, that's right. But at least it's a, it would be a simple, a simple change.
The next item on the agenda is agricultural offenses, and I believe Bill will leave the discussion in the next...
Yeah, I've discussed it with Christine, and we had a meeting before this meeting, and we're still in the discussions, so I would ask if you could join it to the next business meeting.
Okay.
And by that time, we should have a further report.
Okay, so, that's September 8th.
We good?
Okay, sure, that's fine. The fourth item on the agenda is the acceptance of the town clerk and town tax collector's audit reports, and you will find in your packets the Independent Auditor's Report for the end of the year, December 31st, 2014. And it has been offered by Lori Doty, our public, certified public accountant, and she has, she writes to us saying, "In planning and performing her audit of the town clerk and town tax collector in the year ended December 31, 2014, in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, I considered their internal controls over financial reporting as a basis for designing my audit procedures, but not for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls over financial reporting. My consideration of internal control was for the limited purpose described in the preceding paragraph and was not designed to identify all deficiencies in internal control that might be significant. A deficiency in internal controls exists when the design or operation of a control does not allow management or employees, in the normal course of performing their assigned functions, to prevent or detect and correct misstatements on a timely basis. In auditing the cash receipts and disbursements, I found no deficiencies in internal controls. All deposits were made in appropriate period of time, all disbursements were remitted timely to the town and state agencies. This report is intended solely for the information and use of the town supervisor and board, and is not intended to be and should not be used by anyone other than those specified parties." So, we're very grateful to her for her service, and we're very grateful to you for yours. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, do I move to accept those audit reports?
That would be just dandy.
Second?
Second.
Beautifully done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Always nice to see positive results, and we see a lot of them around here, it's just great. Okay, we have two policies to consider. One, one is to note that the sexual harassment policy that we reviewed the last time we met required a small version amendment to change supervisor to department head, and we had, that has been done in this copy, and I believe that's the only correction that was suggested or found to be necessary. So, I would move to accept the copy that we have in our packets as an accepted copy for attachment to the town employment manual. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The second is policies and procedures regarding employee health and safety. And this is a policy that we had extrapolated from our insurance company, NYMER, and from New York State, or not New York State, I guess it's National, OSHA requirements. And I read it, I didn't see any flaws, but I think as our, has been our practice in the last several months, if you would take it with you, read it, and if you see any amendments, let me know what they are, and we'll bring it back next time for approval. Number six, we'll begin board reports, and there is no ethics board report. Jim, have you any, we have a vacancy to consider on the planning board, and I believe in your folders you will see a letter from Mr. Brian Kelly, who is with us here tonight. And Brian, would you like to step up to the, to the microphone? And if anyone has any questions of you, we can know where to look. Thank you. How are you tonight?
I'm doing well, thank you, Nick Brown.
You're welcome, and thank you for the good resume and curriculum theater you've, you've certainly done yeoman's service in and around the Duchess County and near state for that matter.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And what else specific, like training for a planning board? Have you run across that in your, your vast experience?
Well, I'm aware that there's a four-hour training process, which I've not yet undergone. Obviously, I would do that as a conditional appointment, but I haven't been formally trained in any planning matters. It's a thing that I've intersected with quite a bit, working in Beacon, and gaining broadly aware of affairs here in town, but nothing formal, no.
So, as one of a group, would that be a lot different from anything you've experienced before, where you have to share ideas and vote together on a particular project?
Well, I would say, in the context of looking at different pieces of legislation, I've been in an advisory role on a number of occasions in consultation with, with other staff members, so I think there's similarities in that respect.
So, you will give your ideas, and you will receive others' ideas and pick it on them?
I would be very happy to, very happy to. You know, I've encountered a lot of members of the planning board over the years, you know, they're neighbors, friends in some cases, and people for whom I have a tremendous respect and would be looking forward to learning a lot from. So, yeah, by all means, I would, I would look forward to the two-way communication then.
And dealing with sometimes unhappy citizens that appear before the planning board?
I have worked in the state legislature for the last two and a half years, so I am quite familiar with handling the unhappy constituents of the world, and sometimes, sometimes, I even made them happy. So, I, yeah, I understand the dynamic that goes in. People are talking about making money in some cases with projects that come before planning and zoning. So, by all means, I'm aware of the gravity of those situations and how to maintain a certain decorum in those discussions.
Brian, I've spoken with the planning, well, the planning board chair has called me about your appointment, and wants that to happen, but I want to know if you've had conversations with her, and you, you think you understand what's, what the planning board is all about, how those meetings are conducted?
Yeah, on a number of occasions, yeah, yeah. And in fact, we started talking about different projects that are, you know, that are already there. I've looked through the minutes over the years, both here in Red Hook and when I was working for the city of Beacon, so I'm pretty familiar with the sort of discussions that take place and the issues before the planning board.
There's a, a zoning, zoning law, this, this thing, that you, you have to apply.
Yes.
So, it's, it can be, can be burdensome, and, you know, and you're the, you're the gatekeeper of the zoning, and it's a proper use and its limits, et cetera. So, it's, it can often be a challenge, and I think you address that just...
Yeah, I have a somewhat policy wonk leaning personality, so I've had to spend a lot of time poring over the general municipal law, the real property tax law, things like that, in the last couple of years. So, perhaps it's a mental illness, but I find these things fascinating, so...
Tell me about it.
Well, everyone out there thinks it's true of us as well, so you're in very fine company tonight.
institutionalizes us all together.
Does anyone have any other questions for Brian?
No, it sounds like I'd like to find someone that's interested and willing to jump in.
And you live in Red Hook, and you're going to stay here for the foreseeable future?
For the foreseeable, yeah. I've been here a little over seven years now, and I'm pretty happy in Red Hook, right in that little spot by the diner, right in the heart of the village. So, it definitely has felt like home for quite a while now, and I would anticipate it, you know, barring, barring, barring the unforeseen, I anticipate it being home for a while.
After reading your letter and your resume, I just, I can imagine that you would come on board very rapidly.
Appreciate it.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for sending that. And does anyone feel the need to, typically, we refer this back to, you know, if someone writes a letter, often they are interested without having had discussions with the planning board chair. Out of courtesy to the planning board and chair, we refer it back to them for comment. Brenda, you said you had talked with the chair of the planning board. Was it your impression that she felt we should go ahead and move?
She, she would be very happy if we did that. And in addition, she's been having difficulties having a forum lately, but she's happy with Brian's qualifications. I have to say, I am too.
Would you like to make a motion then?
I would like to move that we appoint Brian Kelly to the planning board.
Second?
Would that be to replace Sarah Gilbert?
Yes.
Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, that's the open space. Yeah, and we still, we should mention, we still have two alternate spaces, and we need them to be filled, so please step up, everybody, or somebody.
How much is that? It says 10, do you know?
Yes, it goes to 2020. She was just appointed.
Yeah. I think it's up until 11.
Cannot move until 2020.
2020.
Okay, so, there has been a motion to appoint Brian Kelly to the vacancy that will fill an unexpired term ending in 2020. There's been a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations, and welcome.
Nick, you have to report to a meeting about 20 minutes.
Now, don't forget to show up to the meeting zone.
He'll, he'll probably be there on the 17th.
Can you make it on the 17th?
Uh, yes, the 17th is on my calendar, in accordance with my, my hopes that you guys report.
Don't forget to go in and see Sue McCamp.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, you will have to be sworn in.
Oval Office.
Right, right. Okay, everyone, good work. Is there any further planning board matters? Huh?
Well, I wanted to bring up something, if we do it before the few minutes, but we signed a voucher tonight for $1,350 for taking the trees down. We have Teresa's letter, or anyway, her proposal, and Ann Conway's letter, that says that we should move $1,350 from...
Yeah, I was, I was going to do that...
Are we going to do that later?
Yeah, I was going to do that, Bill, during the, the appropriate bookkeeper's report, but, but go right ahead and do it now.
No, no, I'll wait for it.
It's, now's a good time, I promise you.
Well, I mean, I would make a, I would ask the board, pass the resolution, to use Parkland funds to cover the increased appropriation for the, for the fund balance to pay that $1,350 fee for cutting the trees down at St. Margaret's.
I'll second that, Bill.
Okay, good.
As stated in the bookkeeper's letter, uh...
Right.
Close to whatever.
Right. She, she felt she wanted to be on record, and I felt that it was important that the board understand that we were, this is probably the first time we've used Parklands for outside of the rec park expenses. So, I just wanted to be on record that we voted to do that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good.
If Robert was here, we could say, "We're going to wait till this." If he gets his ice skating rink, he'd, then say, "Those trees are going to fall on your ice skating rink, man, you better cut them down." Trouble me. Better pick up a tab for that.
Bill, you're just so much help tonight, and I told you, what would we do without you?
It goes to, it sounds like he's already volunteered to pick up the tab.
I know.
He's done us quite a bit, you know, and his tab already.
Okay, now, where are we? In no further planning board discussion, may we then talk about zoning board? I believe it has not met this month, is that right?
That's correct, but they did meet in July. Yeah, and addressed their minutes in, in July here. They had, they reviewed one appeal for Bard College, and one of their construction projects there turned out, by the time they surveyed and stuff, and, you know, the road is always questionable, because it's a very old road, it was always part of the properties and so far from the midline. But to make a long story short, they had gotten a variance prior, then they found out that they needed a slightly greater variance because it was still too close to the road, and that was, so they had to go through the process once again, and they did that, and that was approved at the, at the July meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Now, I believe your office, Chris, reminded me later to, to speak with you, an attorney-client, about a letter from Victoria to the zoning board clerk.
Yes.
Who is on vacation this month, and...
That's what I, you know, the...
Right, so I, so we need to resolve that. Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, there is a bookkeeper's report, you'll see here, just keeping a surprise of outstanding balances of the receivables account. And you will see that there is an accounting for the Village of Tully, the Village of Red Hook, the Red Hook Fire Department, and Bard College as well. So, that's for your information, and as we approach budget, budget considerations, those numbers become important. We have a report from Rose Ryder, our faithful and dedicated budget director. Would you like to say anything about this one-liner?
That's, that's about it. It's about time we're in on this, someone is almost on their own, it's time to look at it. So, the reports have gone, budgets have gone out to the departments and to the committees.
Good.
And we'll be getting, getting them back and starting to work with them very soon.
And so, tomorrow, you and I will be meeting with the department head, the first department head, Teresa, and we'll be looking at where we are this year in anticipation of real hard work in September. So, thank you, Rose. There's a building and zoning report here. Jim, I believe you've got that in your folder as well?
Yes, I do.
You want to do that one?
Steve's made it very easy, has a synopsis on it. This is, the building and zoning report from July 6th through August 11th of this year. There were 36 permits issued, 20 inspections, 21 COCCs, that's, you know, Subtlety Rock here, or, forget of compliance, eight complaints followed up on, and a total revenue collected of $6,557. So, Steve's been pretty busy as usual, and made the report easy.
He's been very busy. Okay, thank you, Jim. We have a highway department report. Would you like to jump up and... We have a highway department report. Would you like to jump up and walk us through this?
I can't change your mind about the way we think about winter.
No, you can't change your mind, right? You're always going to think about it one way.
This is, has to do with the salt, any increase in salt prices that are coming. The budget year goes from January to January. The salt contract year does not. It ends at the end of August. So we try and plan for any increases that might be coming up and this speaks to that. I would like to ask the town to authorize the use of the contingency fund to purchase salt under this year's contract. The current price of salt is $62.73 per ton. The contract ends on August 31st, 2015. The bid for the next state contract year is $89.96 per ton. We have $23,000 in the contingency fund. We can purchase 295 tons of salt within our contract requirement. If you purchase over the contract requirement that we file, then you pay a heavy fine. So we can get up to 295 tons of salt, which would be an expenditure of $18,505. This represents a savings of $27.23 per ton, a total of $8,032 over the 2015-2016 contract year expected price increase. There would be a balance of $4,500 left in the contingency fund for this year. We don't have any money left in our salt line, so that's why we're asking to use the contingency.
How much do we usually use in a year, you know?
Well, it depends what year.
Like last year, you.
Our requirement that we file is 1,100 tons. So what happened this year was we used 1,355 tons. You're allowed to go up to 150%, which would be 1,650 tons. So we take averages for seven years. The problem with the past couple of years is we've had, out of four winters, three have been very severe. We always had a little bit of a buffer going into the fall. This is the first time we've ever seen the salt shed empty. And it hasn't been because of the budgeting, it's been because of the weather.
It is empty now, right?
It is empty.
Yeah.
Yep. So we have, we would need to purchase salt before the start of the season in November as we have nothing left in our salt shed. The average tonnage of salt used in the fall/winter season from November to January over the past four years has been 350 tons. And that's just our usage. And we also supply the two villages. So this 295 tons would not be up to that average, but it would be something to start with and we would realize the savings right away.
But it's likely we might even have to buy more of that before the end of the year.
Well, depends on the weather.
Right.
So that's, if we have one of those mild winters, we may not. What is certain is that we are going to be paying more for salt next year. They opened the state contract bids and there was only one bid for Duchess County. And the one bid is from a company that's further away. The state OGS purchaser, person that I talked to today said they're going to question that pricing. Ulster County is $72 a ton. But because Duchess County goes from north to south, we wind up paying delivery charges to the southern towns, even though we're in the north. You know, they take it as one whole package. And this company not being one of our usual companies, being further away, is going to have to pay more for hauling.
This is the only way to buy it. You can't put that up to bid yourself?
You can put it up to bid, but we filed our requirements. And when you file your requirements, you're expecting that you're going to get a decent price, not this kind of price hike. So you could next year if you wanted to. You don't know. The state has a lot of buying power. So I don't know what the difference in price would be. We haven't done that in my time and I don't know for how long before that. This has always been the standard for the town of Red Hook is to go off state contract and for many other towns as well. So this is going to be a big surprise for everybody.
It seems like a no brainer to buy as much of this as we can now.
We could buy more, but we're not allowed to.
Yeah, I see.
So the 295 tons would be the maximum that we could purchase.
It's almost the average supply needed for the fall.
And as an example, if you go over your 150% next year, you're going to be paying $111 a ton instead of $89 a ton. And they call that emergency salt supply. So you have to guess how much you're going to use and see what happens at the end.
It might be something to look into, these purveyors, that, you know, they might want to deal with us better, easier than dealing with the state on some of these things.
It's a good idea.
Well, you know, this is.
If we were to go over that and.
Right.
So if we need more than that, we got to pay $111 a ton, is what you're saying?
No, not this year. Our contract is going to end August 31st. We filed our requirements for next year. If we go over next year, if we go over 150% next year, that's what the projected price is.
So if we run shy this year, this fall is part of next year already?
It's part of next year, but it's the 89.90.
Right.
So we have to kind of roll over that amount. It's just in between the budget years.
Right.
You go from January to January, this goes from September to.
Okay, but so we, you know, so this, we start to eat up next year's quote allotment. If we were to have another winter like that, we could be sitting here needing to do the same thing next year and we could have already used our allotment and therefore have to pay a much higher price.
Now, we're starting off at a better point by getting the salt now.
Right.
Because it's under this year's contract.
Because we have that much left in our contract.
We can use that much. You have a minimum of 70% you have to purchase and a maximum of 150%. So by putting salt in our shed now, under this current year's contract at that price, you're reducing the chance that you need to go over your 120% next year.
And so by doing this, does that bring us up to the 150% for the current year?
Yes. We're going to satisfy the 150% right now. September 1st, we go into a new contract year. Then we can purchase up to 150% of the 1,100 we filed for. Am I making sense?
Yes.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you know, it could get pretty, I don't, it doesn't make sense to me.
One year.
Okay, so we do that and then we have a winter where we need done. So we get penalized because we didn't purchase at least 70%. So then we tell the state, well, I'm sorry, our salt shed is full. What do you want to do, what are you want us to do with this pile of salt?
Well, we'll store it for you.
Yes, I know, but I mean, it's an insane rule.
What they will do is they will store it for you at $3.60 per ton.
Yes, they're going to.
They're always willing to help you, the state.
We had a mild winter and we were one of the only towns that were able to store the amount of salt that we had asked for.
I remember that.
Yeah.
You know, everybody else is storing it outside under tarp's or paying the price. So the salt management history here has been pretty good. So I'm thinking that if we do this now, it will set us up for next year. And next year we have the entire season to either use a minimum of 70% or buy a maximum of 150%.
So a year from now, you'll be worrying this all over again. How about that?
Now, all these numbers you're talking about include both villages and the school, right? Requirements.
Yes, the requirements that we file include what we give out to the village and the school. So we have to, you know, they're.
And when the price goes up to us, the price goes up to them.
Yes. And we send them a letter saying, this is what the price is going to be at the start of the season. And you, they have the opportunity to go elsewhere, but they wouldn't get it any cheaper.
They don't have any place. So the state bid price probably goes up because the purveyors get sick of dealing with the state's insane rules. We don't have any choice.
Well, I would like to, first of all, thank you for being so clear with the calculations and understanding what it is that you're proposing. I appreciate the math and the time you took because we talked about this this morning and I know it was an all dare and I appreciate that, Teresa. So I would like to approve, move to approve the use of the contingency fund in the amount of $18,505.35 for this year before August 31st, while we can get it at the price that we have been given.
Water tomorrow.
Right. And that would be at $62.73 a ton.
Second, then.
Thank you. Any further discussion in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Teresa. And when we prepare the 2016 budget and everybody says, why do we need to put money in a contingency fund? We need to use the budget. This is why. This is why. It's, it seems we always manage to need it. The Red Hook Police Department has sent a report for the month of July. And I'll summarize that by simply saying total incidents of reporting for the period were 65, total arrests were eight, and total tickets issued were 27. The Duchess County Sheriff's Office served the town of Red Hook in the month of July with a total of 87 incidents and those ranged the usual. And the most activity, interestingly enough, being on Tuesdays in the month of July. Why? I have no idea. Almost double what it was every other day. Tuesday's a bad day. Yeah, really strange. Okay, Jim, there's a water department report. And also a water department motion that I'd like to make when you're finished with that.
Okay, with the, first of all, the rehab, the recommendation, this is dated July 14th and I'd seen this before, was the lower bid was Titan Well Drillers. But it was, the chosen was Boyd Artesian Well Company because Titan, in their rehab of the well, uses acid and it was felt that they didn't want that, you know, because obviously we pump from another well that's not too far from the well that is being rehabbed. And it turns out that the purveyor that they chose, the Boyd, actually was the fellow who drilled the wells for us many years ago. I don't have the exact figures here, but his figure wasn't much that higher than the lower bidder. So that was that. I believe at this point, the project for the piping has been completed. And then the monthly report, you know, we're just getting the water readings. The normal for June is 77,000 gallons per day and we pumped 87,000 gallons per day. There was some extra usage, Hank has a note here, due to a hydrant leak that obviously has been taken care of at this point. You know, with replacement of pump one, after that, they'll fix that so the measurement is normal. Well, two, actually, there's 42 resting, which is normal. The turbidity was fine, the cow form was non-detective, chlorine residual is fine and the current status of all the filters are operating properly. And, yeah, here, the pipe work is complete, pipes are replaced and the water was turned on Thursday. June 25th, all went well. And then they just had to finish, complete the painting, which is probably done by now because, and they picked, as I said, Boyd for 5,500. No, you hear the actual figures on here. They chose to rehab the well. Titan's price was 5,000, which was, you know, of course, $500 less, but that's because they used the acid to clean the screen and it was felt not to go that way. And so they're moving along and that's really about it.
Good, thank you, Jim.
I'll be curious as to what the actual yield of that well is after it's rehabbed. But considering the number of years we've been pumping a lot of water out of it, really, that's.
That's right. That's right. How long has that been that we've?
God, they went online, was it '85 or '86?
Is that right?
Yeah. It's a long time.
That is a long time. Yeah, so I would just like to ask for board approval with a motion, I suppose, that we accept the Boyd Artesian Well Company from Carmel, New York and their estimate of $55,000 plus $100 to $200 for the cost of chlorine.
5,500.
What did I say?
55,000.
Did I say 55,000?
You did.
Oh, it just rolls off my tongue so easily. 5,500, thank you. The estimate of $5,500 plus $100 to $200 for the cost of chlorine and I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
Just used to dealing with those big numbers, Sue, I guess.
Yes, I guess. Bill, you have a report on the interministerial task force?
Yeah, well, the task force, the weekly meetings, finished the discussion on the proposed historic preservation law. As we know, it was presented to the town board on July 16th. The draft was and the town board scheduled that town board workshop, which you referred to earlier. That's going to be on September 23rd at 7:30 PM here at town hall. So before that, we'll have a bulleted, is it the word, bulleted? Something called a bulleted summary for the town board members to look at before we get to the series.
Summary with bullets.
I guess so. And in the meantime, we are beginning, there's, I think, a request through the task force to historic Red Hook, which of course has their fingers all over any kind of historic preservation in the town of Red Hook and who are actually working on an inventory. But to have some type of informational meetings, you know, at the historic Red Hook, perhaps in an organized way for people who live within that historic district so that we could reach out for them and speak to them about what is proposed, get their input before we reach the stage of the public hearings, make it a little bit smoother process. So that's in the process of being worked on.
And those meetings would be held here, I assume?
Well, no, they'd be at historic Red Hook, at the, I'm sorry, at the Elmondorff.
Oh, why would that be?
Well, I guess the sense that that's the center of historic preservation in the town of Red Hook would be a great spot for people who need to talk about the idea, the concept, you know, of preserving historic buildings.
More persuasive there than here?
Well, I don't know, maybe so. I don't know that we've heard that they're going to let us do it, but.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I am all for having them help us get the word out, but it is a town function, it feels to me. And I prefer to have the, you know, the public informational meetings here just because it's our project, but I can be outvoted. I'm only one.
Well.
It's, I would love their input and their involvement, you know, and having them attend and I'm sure they will and speak very clearly. So we'll see, we'll see. Is there a timetable for that participation? We're not even there yet, are we?
No, no.
Okay, okay. All right. So I don't believe we have missed anybody in department reports except for mention that. The, we have received correspondence from New York State that we have once again achieved 100% assessment value. And I thought I had the paperwork in my folder, but I don't see it, so. So we are, that is, that is a milestone and that is a good thing. And Bill, you have been kind enough to leave the search for an assessor since there's been a vacancy for the past month and a half. And you have finished with, you and the committee, the.
Yes.
Interviews.
Seven interviews.
And you'll be talking with us later about some of those.
In the executive session, we would be prepared to give you a summary.
Good, good. So we're hoping certainly by the end of this month, we would be better able to report to the public at the next meeting, the outcome of that search.
Yes.
Good. Thank you for doing that. Brenda, do you want to mention anything about the grant application, the grant, the sidewalk grant and the work that you've been doing in that regard?
Sure, on Thursday, last Thursday.
Sure. On Thursday, last Thursday, several spent all day interviewing engineering firms. That was, Sue was there, Ann Conroy, our bookkeeper, Ted Cutsey, the purchasing agent, Lauren Houston from the CAC, and I. Did I miss anyone?
I don't think so.
Ted, I said Ted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so our next step, we have to refine the scope of services to make sure it includes all of our specific, our specific additions and changes, and then we begin negotiations. So it was interesting, as we interviewed the firms, some of them were optimistic that construction would be completed by 2016, and others thought that it would be completed in '17. So that remains to be seen. Of course, we have to, they pointed out that tree, timing of tree removal, which will be required for this project, is restricted because of back habitat, so that does affect our schedule somewhat. And if we were to make the 2016 construction date, we would have to be doing the tree removal before March 31st, '16. Once the negotiations are complete, then we can begin with our first, the first phase we're in, which is the preliminary design phase, where the surveying, environmental review will take place, and also detailed design, as well as a look at right-of-way incidentals. So we're looking forward to the next steps and trying to move forward efficiently.
Well, once again, Brenda, I want to thank you for all the work you've done behind the scenes and for keeping your composure when pressure was on. And it comes on in funny forms, doesn't it?
It does.
So we thank you very much. And you've done, you've just done a wonderful, wonderful job. And I know that the community is going to appreciate it when those beautiful sidewalks lead us down the path.
To the ice skating.
To the ice skating rink, or to the next phase of development of the town of Red Hook. Thank you. Okay. I don't have any other committee reports, but some of you may have. Do any of you have committee reports in your folder that you wish to make?
I did have words from TJ from the recycling center. He just said that the dumping problem has decreased now since he cut his new closed signs.
Good.
So he's happy with that.
Good. I don't think we have anything. I think August has been, July and August are typically sleepy months with committees being otherwise engaged with families and vacations, and that's wonderful. That's the way it should be. So that's all I have. I have one correspondence here that I wanted to note, just to say that Linda Keeling is, again, expressing her concern to us through me, I guess. She's sent a letter to Red Hook Can, asking them to give consideration for the needs of the disabled for this festival coming up. And I'm sure that they will do what they can. Linda, I'm sure they will do what they can. We will do what we can. Thank you for staying on that. It's an important issue. And that's it for me, except for the news for executive session and attorney-client. So Teresa, are you waving like you want to say something, or...
No, like I'm saying goodnight.
Say... Goodnight, everyone? Okay, so I would like to move to go into executive session and attorney-client, and thank you all for your time.
Sue, I just had one question before we closed, go into executive session. Has the county communicated with you or us at all about their immediate intentions on Lyndon Avenue Bridge, since it was closed suddenly because it failed the last inspection?
That's, that's what we heard immediately after the last inspection. I got an email from the county exec's office that afternoon when the inspection failed, or revealed that it was severely eroded, and that they would leave it open for pedestrian bicycle traffic, but it would be immediately closed thereafter. And they would be working on getting the right-of-way permissions that they needed as soon as they possibly could and get on with the installation. So there is no timetable. I spoke with someone from, I can't think who I spoke with this morning about it, and he suggested I talk with Bob Ballkind, who is, you know, the, our transportation guy at Duchess County. And I didn't call Bob because I felt, he's a good communicator. If he knew more, he would tell us. So that's, that's all I know, is that they're working on it. They're moving.
Well, if there was something to say, they would probably...
They're moving ahead as quickly as they can.
Yeah, but it drastically affects all our citizens, so I would like, I think they take very close contact with you. It was originally supposed to start this end of March, this past year.
Yes.
Well, I feel that having this bridge closed will have them move a little quicker.
Well, I should hope so, but I mean...
Because they had to put it off until next year.
But the squeaky wheel gets the grease.
I think it's probably the lawyers are battling with our citizens to get those kind of authorizations to do a lot of the work.
Yeah. Brenda and I learned from the, from the interviews we had with the engineers regarding right-of-way for any project, that sometimes that is the most time-consuming period of any process when it comes to working on roadways and construction, you know, is if you have to negotiate for right-of-way, it can take a long time. And I think that there was some unexpected right-of-way permission that they, they didn't think they needed, that they discovered they needed. And that's what threw off the schedule. Yeah. And I don't know, I, it may be that the people that they need permission from are out of the country for a while. I know one of the landowners was going to be out of the country.
So this, we don't even know the status of that right-of-way.
I do not. I do not. I'm sure they're working on it as diligently as they can. They, but maybe they just can't go any further right this moment, you know? I don't know. I'll try to find out more, and I'll let you know as soon as I do. If you would read my email. Oh.
Always read your email.
Oh, my goodness. He wouldn't do that. Well, then, you'd have to wait until September 8th.
Moment if we're them and put them in an envelope with a 3 cent stamp.
I couldn't resist. I couldn't resist.
Okay.
Did I make a motion to go?
You made a motion. I interrupted you.
To specify in your motion the purpose of the executive session, which would be, I think, hiring or firing. Mattering, right, hiring, firing of a particular person.
A person.
And two matters in litigation, please, if you would.
Do, may I just say ditto?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. What she said is what we're doing. You may, you may pretend I said...
I had written it down, actually.
You did. Sue already, she's already...
I did.
Is there a second?
But Harry, did you second?
Harry seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all. Have a good evening.